I call the, excuse me. I call the June 13th regular session, uh, meeting of the Portsmouth City Council to order. And well, I'll ask my colleagues on council to stand as we have the invocation by Bishop Curtis E. Edmunds, Senior, St. Mark's Missionary Baptist Church and a former member of our city council. And then after that, I'll ask everybody to stand as Councilman Bill Moody leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Bishop Ed- Edmunds.
Gracious God, our Father, we're so grateful for this part of the day. We thank you that you have let us made it, make it through this far. Now bless us as we go about the work of the city. Touch us, God, open our eyes, that, Lord, we will be able to do things that are necessary to get the city moving and keep it moving. Bless each city council person and let them, Lord, be at their posts with smiley faces and glad hearts. We thank you just to be alive with our aches and pains and everything that goes with it. But we've come, Lord, to talk about our city, the greatest city in Virginia, Portsmouth. Amen. So be with us, God. Lead and guide us as only you can. We yield ourselves unto you, for it's in the precious name of Jesus that we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. I'll ask my colleagues to indicate your presence by voting yes electronically. And Madam Clerk, we have a quorum.
Yes, sir.
The next item is the approval of minutes. We have the minutes of a call meeting, May 20th, 2017, the minutes of a call meeting, May 22nd, 2017, the minutes of a call meeting, May 23rd, 2017, and the minutes of a regular meeting, May 23rd, 2017. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and has been duly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes, opposed no. Madam Clerk, the motion carries.
Yes, sir.
We come to a bittersweet moment, and that is to both thank and say goodbye to a very important person and his family, important to the health of our community. And not to embarrass him, but I'll ask Dr. David Chang to come forward, and I'll ask our clerk to read a short little brief bio.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Chang, if you, Chang, if you and your family would come forward, please.
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, this evening, Dr. Chang is joined by his family, Dr. Esther Chang, his daughter Ellie Chang, his son Eric Chang, his son Elijah, and a daughter Esme. For the past six years, Dr. David Chang has served as Health Director for the Portsmouth Health Department. During his tenure, he has worked to create a culture of humility, generosity, and courage. Dr. Chang is not afraid of forging new paths forward in public health. Portsmouth Health Department has led the way in gathering neighborhood-level data in the community by conducting regular door-to-door community health surveys. Additionally, Portsmouth Health Department received notice on yesterday that the Portsmouth Health Accreditation Board Committee conferred accreditation upon the Portsmouth Health Department, distinguishing Portsmouth Health Department as the only accredited health department in eastern Virginia. Under Dr. Chang's leadership, he increased Portsmouth's influence across the region on issues related to health. Dr. Chang has worked tirelessly to develop a team that is able to have difficult conversations around race, privilege, and bias. He has invested time and resources in bringing a variety of diversity and inclusion experts to build a healthy culture in the Health Department and to instill that everyone's input counts and that every staff member is necessary to achieve the mission of creating a healthier Portsmouth. Dr. Chang will join the Portsmouth Health Policy and Planning Division, oh, excuse me, the Public Health Policy and Planning Division of San Mateo Health System in San Francisco, California. Mayor Rowe.
Sir, my. Hello. Well, I think I can protect my voice. Again, this is a very bittersweet moment for us as Dr. David Chang leads us and goes to the far coast of California. It is actually where you grew up.
Yes.
Yeah. And I can say, as a person that has known Dr. Chang since 2012, that he has made a difference, he has made a difference in the health of our community. And we will miss you and your family, and I just can't under, I can't underline that that missing part enough. You've really, really helped our community. And you're also a practicing physician, are you not? You know, pediatric, ophthalmology, okay? Close. But anyway, as a token of our appreciation, we would like to give you the certificate of appreciation to Dr. David Chang, M.D., for your loyal service, diligent and dedicated service to the city of Portsmouth as Health Director, and for having served as a tireless advocate for a more healthy and livable community, and it's dated today, and we will greatly miss you.
Thank you. No.
Thank you. Now we come to public hearings. We have Agenda Item 17242, which is a public hearing on use permit applications. The first is Use Permit 17-01. And we have a briefing first by our Director of Planning.
See if we can get our slides up here.
While we wait, we'll have Mr. Baldwin's presentation first, then I'll open the public hearing, and then at the conclusion of the public hearing, I'll entertain a motion on this matter.
Thank you again, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor, Chair, members of city council. As noted before you tonight, is a use permit application for a Wendy's restaurant with a drive-through window at 835 London Boulevard. This property is in our D2 Form-Based Code District, a district which has been much discussed by city council. We would note as part of this application, the applicants are requesting a number of, of, we'll refer to as deviations and modifications to the design standards from the D2 district. Just to point out, as you are aware from some of our previous briefings, this is one of those items where the use is in the use table as permitted with a use permit, but the design standards never really took into consideration this type of a use, which has created the need for the number of deviations you have before you tonight. As I think you're all aware, the site in question is located, again, on London Boulevard. It's right next to the McDonald's, across Chestnut Street from the Kentucky Fried Chicken and across London from, I believe, the Hardee's is across the street. This is our zoning map. As you can see, what's in blue, that's our Form-Based Code, General Urban Frontage District that is referred to today. Just below that, in the darker purple, that's our D1 district. What you're seeing there is the, the T5 transect district. So these are actually two different zoning districts between the D1, that's a D1, D2 boundary line there on Queen Street. Once again, I'm sure everyone's familiar with the site and see the star there identifying the parcel in question. And again, this is a view from London for those people who want to remind themselves what the property looks like. Just to the left of the screen there, you can see the, the edge of the McDonald's restaurant. As we noted, there are a number of modifications been requested by the applicant. Again, these primarily relate to the, the number of design standards that are in our Form-Based Code District, which are nearly impossible to comply with on a restaurant with a drive-through. We've spent quite some time with the applicants, working through a number of, of different variations, trying to, trying to come up with something that was close. I'm sure you'll hear from the applicants tonight, they have been through the Board of Zoning Appeals, trying to get some relief on some of these things. However, some of those standards are design standards, they really don't rise to the level of a variance, and so they could not get everything through. And that's here from the Board of Zoning Appeals, who are back approaching this through the use permit process. I want to point out a couple of these, I think we'll point out, you've got a site that's got road frontage on three sides. You can see from the requirement there that's listed on number two, where it says the building facade must be at least 75% of the length of all street frontage. It's nearly impossible to do a drive-through restaurant with that much street frontage. The design standards clearly were not anticipating three road frontages, and again, that's the type of thing that creates the need for some deviations or modifications. One I'll point out to you, go a little more detail in a second, is number six, curb cuts. We talked a little about some of the, the situation on the entrances into the site. I think you're aware, it's very close, in fact, right next to the entrance into the McDonald's. You're almost at the London and Effingham intersection there, creates some challenge, creates some challenges in terms of getting in and out of the site. And so there's some standards there that will have to be complied with. And again, there are just a number of standards in here dealing with the facade, some of the parking setbacks that simply, in this configuration, the parcel of the side with the multiple street frontages were nearly impossible, if not impossible, for a fast-food restaurant to comply with. And the last one, kind of an important one, I think we've discussed this before, one of the concerns we've had with the signage standards in the D2 Form-Based Code does not allow any internally-lit signs. It really has design standards that would be more applicable if you were in the D1 section of High Street, say 300, 400, 500 block of High Street, those types of signs, clearly not typical of what you see on London Boulevard with the fast-food restaurants and the number of shopping centers and internally-lit signs. So in this case, the applicants requested some relief from the signage requirements to do a sign that's more typical to the, to the other uses that are up and down the London Boulevard corridor. Just look at a few of the building elevations here. You can see the front, that's the top-left view there, as to what the front of the building would look like facing London. The applicants have attempted as much as they can to try to meet the spirit of the D2, if not the full standard requirements. You can see the rear elevation back towards Queen Street. And here, we're looking at the two, the west and the east elevations, two sides of the building. And then finally, we'll take a look at the conceptual site plan. I just wanted to point out one thing about the access to the site. Again, I mentioned, you can see, again, to the right of the graphic there, the entrance into the McDonald's. You can see how close it would be to have an entrance into the Wendy's right next to that and right, while you're in a right turn lane heading up towards Effingham. What the city required was for the applicants to perform a traffic impact analysis, which they've done. It's been reviewed by the city engineer, and the ultimate solution to this issue here is going to be a site, as you can see here, that has entrance into the site coming off of Chestnut. You can see it running into the double drive-through, which is on the bottom side of the building there, gets through the double drive-through, and then that will run out to London, which will be a right-out only. So there will not be an entrance into the site off of London. It's going to be a right turn only at that location, which we think creates a safer and certainly allows access. But another one of those issues that our D2 Form-Based Code would not have been very handy at trying to resolve. The Planning Commission, at their meeting back in May, voted unanimously to recommend approval, including the 10 deviations as, as been identified in your packet. These would be compliant with the elevations, the material's been submitted with the application packet. Staff also recommended approval, and with that, be glad to answer any questions you may have about this application. And I know the applicant has representatives here, can answer questions as well.
Thank you. Does the applicant have any further to add? And if you do, please come to the lectern and identify yourself.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council for the record. My name is Lisa Murphy. I'm an attorney with an office at 999 Waterside Drive in the city of Norfolk. I'm here today on behalf of Wendy's Properties LLC. As the clerk will probably indicate, we have several folks here from Wendy's. We've got Ashley Spurling, who's on the, the site development and acquisition team. We've got the two new franchisees, the Delight Group, Richard and Andrew Crumholtz, who are here. They will be taking over this site or leasing this site from Wendy's Properties if it is approved. We've got the engineer here, Greg Hayes. So we've got lots of folks to answer questions, should you have any, in addition to myself. As Mr. Baldwin indicates, this site has taken a lot of time. The application that you have before you tonight is the culmination of nearly two years of work on the part of Wendy's acquisition, design professionals, PRHA, the engineers. Fortunately, I've only been involved for a year, but lots of folks have been working at this for a long time. We appreciate all of the work of Bob Baldwin and John Hartley and staff to really try to find a way to make this work, and it's, it's been a challenge. But we think that the application that you have before you not only complies with the key components of the comprehensive plan, but also really enables us to meet many of the requirements of the D2 district, but also, more importantly, to meet the spirit of the D2 district. The key policies of the comprehensive plan, as the staff report indicates, are promoting mixed-use, pedestrian-friendly land use, raising the bar on the quality of development, and then seeking opportunities, most importantly, to convert tax-exempt lands to productive uses, especially PRHA properties. And we feel like on those counts, we've really hit a home run. Wendy's plans to invest nearly $2.4 million in this property, in capital and development. And more importantly, that means that when they acquire this property from PRHA, it will be off the, off of the PRHA's list of properties and back on your tax rolls. Plus, as applicable, revenue to the city will come through a variety of meals and use taxes. Typical Wendy's employs 35 employees, so it'll also be a job generator. In addition, as Mr. Baldwin pointed out very well, we really have tried to make this site design as pedestrian-friendly as possible. We've pulled the building itself to the corner and created the patio and increased landscaping to really soften the view. We've met the, the quality of the building materials. As you'll see, as you look at some of the uses around there, this really is going to raise the bar on development in that area, and we're very, very proud of that. The, you know, when we sat down, at the end of the day, there were two things that Wendy's really had to have for a safe site, an efficient site, and a site that was going to be economically viable for the city as well as for Wendy's, and that was really access on London Boulevard and signage. There were a lot of places where we could work on design. The, there were some limitations on this site because it's narrow and because of the, the elements that Mr. Baldwin described, but we were really able to meet those D2, a lot of the D2 requirements, and again, the spirit of the D2 Form-Based Code. As Mr. Baldwin mentioned, we went to the BZA back in December. We received one of the variances we requested, several were denied, or two were denied, and the rest were deferred. And what the BZA said was, you've got a problem that's general in nature, and the solution to that is a legislative solution and not a variance. It's not necessarily a specific problem to you. So again, with all of the work of staff and the, and the members of the Wendy's team, we've been able, hopefully, to achieve something, like I said, that's a home run for the community. As the staff report indicates, we comply with the comprehensive plan, we meet the spirit of the D2 district, Form-Based Code, and many of its requirements. And we've done this while preserving Wendy's ability to operate in a safe and effective manner and in a manner that's compatible with the surrounding uses. And like I said, at the end of the day, we could, we could give on a lot of things design-wise, but access and signage were important. As the staff report indicates, this is a six-lane road, speed limit's 45 miles an hour, signage is really important for this type of use, and it's consistent with the signage on the other surrounding uses. Access, as the staff report indicates, the traffic impact analysis confirmed that the entrance only on Chestnut, right out on London Boulevard, wouldn't impact the overall traffic. But it does help us to sort of safely and efficiently move people in and out of the site. I'm happy to answer questions you have. Again, we appreciate all of the work that staff has put into this, and we're thrilled to hopefully make this happen. So thank you, we appreciate your support.
Again, this is the briefing part of our consideration of this matter, and I do have a member of council that has a question for you. Councilwoman Simmons.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Murphy, and to the rest of your team, and the investors in particular, you know, I just want to say, on behalf of all of us, I am sorry that you have been the guinea pig and poster child for this legislation, but you were the guinea pig and poster child at this council's retreat in February on, you know, one of the main reasons why we needed to blow up this code, and I'm delighted that, that we're finally getting this far along and that this is, looks like it's going to work. It will be my pleasure to make a motion to approve. As a downtown resident, I'm looking forward to you coming, and I'm, I'm very pleased with the way this has worked out.
Thank you, ma'am. So that we can have a formal reading of the request, I'll call upon the city clerk. Madam Clerk, will you read the request, please?
UP 17-01, Uptown, request of Wendy's Properties LLC for a use permit to construct a restaurant with a drive-through window at 835 London Boulevard. The property is owned by Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority and is located in the D2 Form-Based Code District. The applicant is also requesting approval of deviation from the D2 FVC standards and requirements, including the height on the first floor and the length of the building facade, allowing a blank rear wall, the requirement for ease, the spacing of curb cuts into the property, the front setback, and the location type and character of signage.
Thank you. Ms. Murphy, you can sit down. I will now open the public hearing. Is there anybody present that would like to speak on this matter? Either for or against? The public hearing on council's consideration of this conditional use permit is, is open? Any speakers? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed, and we'll entertain a motion. We have a motion that's been duly seconded, and that's to approve the recommendation from the Planning Commission. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes, opposed no. And Madam Clerk, the motion carries.
Yes, sir.
The next item is conditional use from, or use permit 17-02. And Madam Clerk, would you read that caption?
Yes, sir. UP 17-02, Downtown, Tim Jones with CJN Real Estate Holdings is requesting a use permit to convert the second and fourth floors of the building at 467 Court Street to up to 15 apartments for an overall density of over 100 units to the acre. The property is presently zoned D1 Downtown in the T5 sub-district and was formerly occupied by the Mansion Night Club. The property is designated on the comprehensive future land use plan in the mixed-use downtown area.
And Madam Clerk, I understand that there's been a development since this agenda was published?
Yes, sir. The property has been sold, and management is requesting withdrawal of this item.
Is there a motion to approve the withdrawal of this item from our consideration?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to withdraw. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes, opposed no. And the motion carries. This brings us to the city manager's report, Item 17243. Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the ordinance?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend the FY 2017 and FY 2018 Capital Improvement Program budgets by closing out Building Preservation Project 601 and 1846 Courthouse and transferring the project's remaining budgeted funds of $293,857 to the renovations to various building projects to fund naval museums, structural repair, and other building renovations.
In order for us to put this before us for our consideration, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? We have a motion that's been duly seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, we're ready for the vote. All in favor of the vote of the motion, vote yes, opposed no. And the motion carries. Which brings us to Item 17- projects to fund naval museums, structural repair, and other building renovations.
In order for us to put this before us for our consideration, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? We have a motion that's been duly seconded to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none. We're ready for the vote. All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Opposed, no. And the motion carries. Which brings us to item 17-244, which is the adoption of a ordinance to appropriate certain funds. And Madam Clerk, would you read that caption?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to appropriate $334,903 of FEMA grant funding and insurance proceeds received as a result of Hurricane Matthew to the operation and maintenance classification of the FY 2017 grant fund budget for the Portsmouth Public Schools.
So that we can put this before us, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there, we have a motion that's been duly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, the motion carries?
Yes, sir.
This brings us to item 17-245, which is the adoption of an ordinance accepting certain grants funds. Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting $15,000 of funding received from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services and appropriating said amount in the FY 2017 Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund for use by the Department of Behavioral Healthcare Services to build capacity to address OPEA abuse, opioid, excuse me, abuse.
So that we can put this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a motion to approve that's been duly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Opposed, no. Madam Clerk, the motion carries?
Yes, sir.
We have item 17-246, which is the consideration of an ordinance accepting certain grant funding. Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting $5,126 of program to assist in the transition from homeless funding received through the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services and appropriating said amount in the FY 2017 Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund for use by the Department of Behavioral Healthcare Services to assist with homeless transition services.
In order to consider this matter, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion that's been duly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And the motion carries. And this brings us to item 17-247, which is the consideration of another ordinance to accept certain funding and appropriate the same. Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the ordinance?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a public safety answering point grant of $2,000 from the Virginia 911 Services Board and appropriating said amount in the FY 2018 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Police Department Emergency Communications Unit to fund training.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there, okay, we have a motion to approve that's been duly seconded. Any discussion? We're ready to vote on the question. All in favor, vote yes. All opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries?
Yes, sir.
This brings us to item 17-248, which is the consideration of the adoption of an ordinance accepting another grant. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a Virginia Rules Camp Grant of $5,000 from the Virginia Attorney General's Office and appropriating said amount in the FY 2017 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Police Department to fund a summer day camp.
In order for us to consider this, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
One second.
We have a motion that's been duly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote electronically yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to item 17-249, which is the consideration of a resolution approving a certain contract. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption?
Yes, sir. And just before I read the caption, members of city council, you initially had a draft of the contract in your package. It was updated with a final copy. So just for your and the public's information. A resolution authorizing the execution of a contract for the purchase and sale of water with the City of Chesapeake, Virginia.
In order for us to consider this matter, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there, okay. We have a motion that's been duly seconded to approve the resolution. Any discussion? And the chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it would be good for the public's information, perhaps a member of staff could share with the public the revenue that will be generated in this agreement over the course of time.
Thank you, sir. Madam City Manager?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council. The City of Portsmouth currently has a contract that was executed with the City of Chesapeake in January 1 of 1990. And with that contract, it was to end in 2026. However, based on the needs of the development or the outgrowth of the Western Branch area of Bowers Hill areas of Chesapeake, the City of Chesapeake, working with the City of Portsmouth, now requested that we extend the contract. Whereas by 2026, they would have had to draw down about 5 million gallons of water per day. Right now, they draw down 4 million gallons of water per day. But with this contract, the value of the existing contract through 2026 is estimated approximately $125 million. The proposed contract revenue through June 30, 2047, is approximately $197 million. This is a guaranteed increase in revenue of approximately $72 million extending the contract through 2046.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion to approve and adopt the resolution, vote yes electronically. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion passes.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to new business, item 17-250, consideration appointments to boards and commissions. Vice Mayor Cherry?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I'd like to move the following appointments. To the Community Criminal Justice Board, Dr. Roslin Sandley. To the Cultural Alliance liaison, Karen Burgess. To the Historic Preservation Commission, Chris Crowder. To the Library Board, Pastor Louis Gibbs. To the Parks and Recreation Commission, Scott Horn and Ashley Starling.
Thank you. We have a motion for these appointments. Any discussion? It's been seconded. Ready for the question? All in favor, vote yes. Opposed, no. And the motion carries. Which brings us, yes, sir?
Mayor, if I may, I'd just-
Oh, yes, please.
I'd just like to make an appeal to those in the audience and those who are watching in public that we do have immediate openings on several boards and commissions, namely the History Commission, the Historic Preservation Commission. In the Historic Preservation Commission, we're looking for a resident of Craddock's and Port Norfolk neighborhoods. For the Housing Board of Justice and Appeals, we really could use some female representation there. And for the Supplement Retirement Board, we could use minority and female representation.
Financial background.
And also with financial background. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Which brings us to item 17-251, items submitted by council members. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of wonderful items tonight. And before I forget, I certainly want to thank the city staff and the citizen volunteers who put on such a wonderful Memorial Day parade two weeks ago. Our city staff, Renee Spratley and her team, really did a super job organizing, sending out letters, and corralling the troops. Our mayor's military affairs committee, which is chaired by Irv Lindley and volunteer Peter Youngblood and Terry Danaher, did a super job putting the parade together with Renee and her team and volunteers from the Coast Guard and the Navy down at Norcom High School to get all 85 units down to the foot of High Street. And I think they did a wonderful job, and I certainly want to thank them. Coming up, it's a busy time in the city. We just finished the Seawall Festival and Harbor Fest, but we're starting, we've already started our Thursday evenings at Portside. So every Thursday now this summer, beginning at 6:30 PM at Portside, we'll have music from 6:30 to 9:00. This week, it's the Billy Joel Trio and Soul Intent the following week, raw jazz the following after that. This coming weekend, June 16th and 17th, is the 30th Annual Race to Cock Island, which is a beautiful sailboat race to watch if you've never seen it. And in addition to that, there is entertainment open to the public at Portside. The original Rondelles are playing Friday night. Soul Intent is playing Saturday night. And it's really wonderful to come down. Unfortunately, you can't stand on the seawall behind the hotel right now, but another month or so you'll be able to do that. But even to go out on Crawford Parkway or go out to the marina and watch the sailboats go by is really a lot of fun. We have a lot of activities at our libraries. There's a publication put out by the Portsmouth Libraries called Navigator. There are activities at the Craddock Library, the Main Library, the Churston Library branch almost every day. And a lot of activities for children. I would encourage parents especially to pick up a copy of this and see what's of interest for your child. Coming up, in the not-too-distant future, Thursday, June 29, the Friends of the Juvenile Court will be holding a fundraising event at the Women's Club in Glen Sheila called a Children's Chair Affair. You'll see these cute little cards out and about, and there will be chairs painted by famous local artists that will be available for sale and for auction. And they've been painted by the likes of Bob Burnell and Ken Wright and Barbara Vincent and Kim Keene and Pat Pfeiffer and lots of local artists that we know and love. And that's a ticketed event, $25. You can call 397-2799 for more information. We have more coming up in July, of course, with the Fourth of July and beyond, but we'll talk about that at the next meeting.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, this brings us to item 17-252, report on pending items. Madam City Manager, Dr. Patton?
We have just a-
Your mic.
Mayor, we have one item in the citizen advocacy report that we could ask Mrs. Holt to report on, please.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. I'd like to give you the report for the council meeting on May 23, 2017. There were five non-agenda speakers. One of the speakers required action by staff. Excuse me. Denise Bird advised city council about flooding in her backyard at 3908 Winchester Drive. She and two of her neighbors met with the Public Works staff on May 9, 2017. They were concerned about a new house constructed at 4012 Winchester Drive blocking the drainage, causing flooding in their backyards. They believe there's a line that runs from their properties and connects to the line next to the driveway of 4012 Winchester Drive. Public Works CCTV'd the storm drain lines prior to the new house construction, and the line was connected to the city's storm drains, but not to anything else. After the council meeting, Public Works CCTV'd the storm drain lines to the north on Arlington and to the south from Winchester to Greenway Court South. It was determined that water was flowing through the system as designed, and there is no evidence of a pipe leaking that would impact the properties on Winchester Drive. Public Works has advised the citizens of their findings.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. This brings us to item 17-253, non-agenda speakers. And our first speaker, before we start that, Madam Clerk, would you read the protocol on speakers, please?
Ladies and gentlemen, city council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you'll notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am. And our first non-agenda speaker is Tracy Link. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, y'all. Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Cherry, esteemed members of city council. My name is Tracy Link, and I live on Sneed Fairway in the Green Lake section of the city. I also am president of Integrity Security Services, beautifully operating in Midtown Portsmouth. And finally, I'm your local division chair of the Hampton Roads Chamber. One year ago today, my company won the esteemed Entrepreneurial Excellence Award from Inside Business. I am living, breathing proof that you can start and build a business in Portsmouth and be successful. We turn three on Friday. Ladies and gentlemen, we can all agree that the best way to fix many of the problems that plague our city is to increase our tax base. And I find no better way to increase our tax base than businesses working in our city and hiring from our community. Over 50% of the American population works in small businesses, and trends for manufacturing and exporting services are at an all-time high, some kind of businesses that would just work beautifully with our ports. There's no better time than now for us to start building businesses in our community. And to help them start, the Hampton Roads Chamber Portsmouth Division is holding on June 22, the BizSmart Symposium. It's going to be at ODU Tri-City Center, 8:30 till 12. And it is a veritable who's who of small business development in Hampton Roads and in Portsmouth. We're going to have a speaker from Hatch, somebody from Virginia Community Funding, 757 Makerspace, for anybody who wants to invent something or build a prototype. Just DMBE is going to be there. EVA is going to have a representative there. We're going to have a panel discussion. And afterwards, for the first time, we're going to ask them all to take seats at tables and give everybody an opportunity to ask questions individually. If you know anybody, anybody in the city that thinks they might want to own a business, send them to this event. They will meet the people that will get them started. And I know from personal experience, these are the people that get you started. So I've given the Sergeant-at-Arms flyers to hand out to all of you. For everybody who's here, I also have more flyers they can get at the end of the meeting. I'm very proud of this event. We're hoping to do it twice a year until we find every single entrepreneur that wants to start in this city. Like I said, I'm living, breathing proof that it can be done, and it can be done in this economy, and it certainly can be done in our beloved hometown. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Maggie McGruder. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
My name is Maggie McGruder. I live at 111 High Street. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. After reading, the Portsmouth School Board blames our city council for its cuts in the school positions and the funding. I must speak to this and defend our city council. The last three years, the school system has been giving all the funding that they requested. It is now time to work on other things in our city. But I want to thank our council for making the tough decisions. And there are many things in our city that we need to do and that we only have one pot of money from our taxpayers that we pull from to do all the things that we need to do in our city. And council, I know your job. It is not an easy one to do. To think that the city does not support education because it did not approve the full funding that the schools wanted, it is very upsetting. More money in the schools is not going to fix everything that our schoolchildren and the children in our communities need. Our children need families. Our children need both a mother and a father. This gives our children the care and guidance that they need in their life. If they had this, this would help in our schools. Money cannot buy this. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. And our last speaker is Mark Gudalgi-Yowtrawski. And sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow interested parties. My topic is also schools, but before I go there, I'd like to say that I'm disappointed that this month's first briefings did not address the transfer station issue for Portsmouth. The management has stated that there will be a report forthcoming. I would like to see it sooner rather than later. With regard to the assertion in last night's work session that the schools do not desire to partner with the city in terms of merging the other post-employment benefits funds, I would- I would have to say that's a misinterpretation, a misunderstanding of the word partner, because the attitude of the city for most of the time that I've been here, going on twenty-one years now, has been that in terms of money, the city's attitude is what's mine is mine, and with regard to the school board's money, what's yours is ours. And so if the school board is less than trusting of the city's overtures, there is a basis for that, probably predating my tenure in this city. The expressed aversion on the part of several council members last night to going after the school board in court was welcome news. You are not cementing your partnership relationship through adversarial proceedings. What needs to happen in terms of the working relationship of the two governing bodies is City Council needs to recognize that the school board in its own right is a governing body. That right was granted by the General Assembly a number of years ago, a great many years ago. But the fact that the General Assembly didn't give them their own revenue stream to control was a major deficiency, and it is my hope that we can make the General Assembly recognize that needs to be addressed, and then the two boards can work together as equals. So long as City Council holds a portion of the purse strings, that's not possible. In the meantime, you really need to consider carefully the way you phrase your concerns about the schools, because there is so much that is said by members of council that helps to undercut public support for the schools and is only detrimental to your stated goal of making our school system, our public education system, the pride of the region. To me, schools are the primary economic development mechanism for any locality. What we invest in our young people will come back to reward us many times over. We need to do it right. And notwithstanding what the previous speaker said about families, you know, you cannot legislate family health. What you can do is establish programs that help families that are in distress and, in turn, help the children in those families. The children are never at fault for family dysfunction. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And ladies and gentlemen, this concludes our business for tonight, and this meeting is now adjourned.